In accordance with the requirements of open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. If you have not done so, we have a sign up sheet.
We don't.
We don't?
Because there's no public hearings.
Oh, no public hearings, so no sign up sheet. We've called to order, is there any public comment? I'm skeptical, but okay. The third item has been canceled. We had a joint board selectman meeting. Four appointments. Yeah?
Yep.
Right into it. 205 Sunset Lane driveway plan. Driveway plan what?
I have to recuse myself from the driveway plan because--
Is this an application or a special permit?
I don't think the board can act on it without a fourth member.
Yeah, so I mean driveway plan what?
Well, it was a request for common driveway.
So why doesn't it say common driveway application?
What?
Isn't it a common driveway?
Because common driveways by right and under zoning, it requires the planning board to issue an approval and the board of selectmen to issue an approval independently in order to vary the location of the common driveway from splitting the two building lots.
So we can't act on this with two people?
That's just the full size of the colored one.
Well, you don't have a quorum of the board.
Oh, that's true. So we probably can't even talk about it. Can't even deliberate without a quorum.
But it doesn't count for anything.
Counts outside of a meeting. Why doesn't it count at a meeting?
Well, because you're in public, you're at your meeting.
Okay. But there's no quorum.
Correct.
I'm confused.
Well, there's a quorum because he's here, he just isn't participating.
I'm still confused.
So essentially if he was participating, you could pass it with two out of three votes.
I think you still need the three votes, even if he were to abstain, I don't know that a motion would carry.
So should I come back when there's another member?
I hate to ask you to, but--
I just want to do it straight.
And I think it's going to be better for your client to have it--
I agree.
Done legally.
When all the i's dotted and t's crossed.
Still discuss it.
You can, you just can't make any decisions and--
Might as well get your input now in case there's something that--
You're already here.
Correct. And there won't be a vote and we'll have Paula do a Mullen rule into it and she can vote when she comes back.
Now, is this, so this isn't the A and R?
The A and R is approved, which you signed. So this--
This is--
Actually, I'll let the applicant--
Well, the reason I say that is she is here at the initial meeting, can she still file--
Correct, yes. It doesn't matter, the Mullen rule allows you to miss one meeting and participate.
I thought--
But it doesn't matter if you're here for the beginning or you missed one in the middle.
So we're fine.
Correct.
Okay, so we are proposing a shared driveway to serve the two lots, lots 2A and 2B, or a common driveway. And the common driveway would come off of Robbs Hill Road. And the reason we planned it this way is due to the topography of the land, as well as the environmental concerns on the other side of Sunset Lane, which is at the bottom of the page, Lake Shirley is across the street. So we have a property that is an esker of sand with steep slopes running from the top of the property down to Sunset Lane. And constructing a driveway makes a lot more sense to be entering in off of Robbs Hill Road where you're at the highest elevation, more or less, and you're going across the top of the ridge to access both lots. And as you can see, we had sent this in in advance, the fire chief, Adam, was kind enough to forward it along to the fire chief and he had come back with some comments from our design that you may have seen at the last meeting, which was, he referenced or recommended that we widen the connection at Robbs Hill Road to make a straighter entrance for Lot 2A. So as you can see, it is a much straighter shot from Robbs Hill Road to that house. It immediately forks once you get into the property, so shouldn't be any confusion, it'll be easy to be able to put signage there to direct traffic as to which house is which. Again, the grading is minimal. We also took the fire chief's recommendation of widening the accessway, so we have a 12-foot wide driveway with two foot shoulders on either side, giving us a width of at least 16 feet. And then we've also, the darker gray area down by Lot 2A into the lot there is an emergency vehicle turnaround or delivery vehicle turnaround, which would be gravel, which would allow the vehicles to turn around and be able to come back out in a forward manner. So again, we're looking at it environmentally, making sure we don't have to cut in a driveway coming from Sunset into a steep hillside with nice mature vegetation already in place and coming in from an easier access point on Robbs Hill Road to serve both lots. So I guess with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I don't have any issues with it, the way it's being proposed, I think. Makes sense to me.
Well, I guess I don't-- I don't have much to say about it either, I suppose. You haven't done any testing for the septic yet?
Yeah, we have. We have, Jim Griffey was there. That's, Paula had mentioned, she had seen an accessway already built in there. That was us getting in deep there to do the soil testing for the Board of Health. So yes, we've done soil testing on both lots.
I drove by the properties today and, you know, this is, I mean, you can tell by the contour lines, but it's a significant slope.
Oh, yeah, no, I've been to the site as well.
Yeah, we're just trying to maintain all that and stay up on the flat area. Being that it's all sand and gravel without any groundwater issues, it's nice to be able to just scalp it off the top and move it around a little bit and make it a little bit easier to build on.
Hmm.
Where they do have viable frontage--
Yes.
They're good lots, it's just, this to me seems like a much more practical way to gain access.
They've got adequate required frontage.
Mm-hmm.
So viable would be that they could gain access to the lot from the frontage. I think that would qualify as viable, but, yeah, no, it works.
Okay.
The A and R is signed.
Yeah.
Yeah, we already signed that.
And this would be paved all the way through?
Either that or compacted gravel, that'd be determined by whoever builds.
Durable and dustless is all that's required.
Right.
So I'm not quite sure what else we can do--
No, just get your input and, like I said, we can come back when you have another member and go from there.
We'll put you on for eight April. But I'll verify with Paula beforehand that she'll be here.
Fantastic. Sounds great. Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You can keep that color one too for your files.
So our next appointment--
Is just a person?
Yes. He was, he requested to be put on the agenda.
Okay.
I believe he wants to speak about potential new uses.
Oh my God. Well, okay, Mr. Massey.
I forgot my printout. A potential new use?
Darren Massey, 300 Holman Street, Lunenburg. Good to see all of you. Thanks for this time. I see also on the agenda is the special event discussion in consideration, so I look forward to that discussion and hearing what this board believes of that. I would like to make, bring your attention to this afternoon, I forwarded an email to Adam Burney, I would request him share that with the members of this board. There are two attachments in the email, the one has to do with adding a use for farming and artistic events across town. The second has to do with special event guidelines. Both describe oversight through the Board of Selectmen. I look forward to your commentary on those two attachments. In addition, I want to bring your attention to recent Board of Selectmen meeting where I requested two special event permits, myself together with individuals planning for a photography event and a second for a pride celebration in the summer, over three days, day events at the property on Holman Street. I look forward to questions and my request for this board is for follow-up meetings with the various relevant departments who would oversee oversight of those events. I believe I may need to meet with fire, with police, DPW perhaps, Land Use Director to coordinate appropriate practical issues regarding those three special permits. Very happy to meet with those departments and ensure that all contingencies are addressed and then look forward to returning to the Board of Selectmen to demonstrate capacity to deal with those contingencies. Welcome taking questions now, based on the information that you already have or request future appointment.
So this is kind of in relation to our sixth thing, process, substance and form specific to large public events, as well as-- No? Sorry. Okay, so it seems that this appointment is related to our sixth appointment, process, substance and form specific to large public events. We really should have the volume for the people at home. Hello? 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 Can you hear me? Yeah? Okay, thank you. So this appointment seems to have something to do with two other items on our agenda. There we go, I can hear myself. So do we want to group them together or, I mean, they all have something to do with each other, I'm not quite sure whether they're separated.
Well, originally, Mr. Massey, through his counsel, requested to be put on the agenda. My understanding was to talk with the planning board about the potential for adding a use similar to the one he filed the citizen petition for, to the bylaws. I have suggested to him in the past and I think the board will agree that they're the appropriate place to start if a resident would like a use added to the zoning bylaw. And that was my understanding of at least the genesis of their request. Number six, the process, substance and form specific to large public events was something that the chair requested. And the special event permit is something that is a policy that the Board of Selectmen has been working on that was forwarded to the board for general comment and discussion.
Uh-huh. Yes.
So that's why they're separate, because they, excuse me, while they may all have some connection, they come from different places.
Okay.
You know, the special event permit is just something that the board may look at and may comment back on. Mr. Massey, again, made a request to be on the agenda and number six is somewhat different than what the, my understanding of the original request was, so they were placed separately. The board can certainly, at their choice, combine topics and have a general discussion together.
Okay. How does, does anybody have any input on that, as far as combining or how to proceed?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, it seems that the commentary from Mr. Massey follows along with agenda item six and special event permit in item number 10.
Right. I have input on item number six. I don't have anything specific or any specific questions pertaining to what you just said. Though it sounds, what you said actually seems to line up with what's in here, is, have you seen this permit guideline document yet?
Correct. Earlier today, there were two submissions for article, warrant articles, citizen petitions that you will have. One is similar to that document--
Okay.
--that you have there, submitted by citizens, to move the conversation forward for special event guidelines.
Okay.
So yes, citizens in this town are moving forward with requesting guidelines for special events.
Okay. So with regards to the guidelines, I have input. Did you have concern with the guidelines, the way that they were documented?
I've, myself and others have given input and we've taken what's in that document into consideration and we've submitted what we believe is fair and reasonable.
Oh, so you have an alternate document that was submitted?
There are minor altercations.
Do we have a copy of that?
I got the email at five o'clock, I have not printed it out.
Okay. Okay.
So I guess my question is, what specifically are you looking for this board to do for you tonight?
Concretely, perhaps, what might be helpful tonight is to share the request for the three special permits recently requested from the Board of Selectmen. I would ask for specific criteria that this board could guide me on to fulfill the basic needs for those events, safety, fire, DPW, conservation. For what I've received to date is a document from the Land Use Director, which has broad guidance for any event across town. That is helpful as a starting point, though for myself, to return to the Board of Selectmen in two weeks, I would like to demonstrate to them, based on your feedback, that I have the capacity and the willingness to fulfill specific criteria that you recommend, based on practical details for the events proposed. I don't see a practical necessity for fire to be involved, as one example, but after your review, if that is the case, I would like to set up appointments with the Department of Safety and discuss what I need to do regarding fire to sign off on the events and police and DPW and the other departments.
I think the easier thing, and since the planning board would rely on each of those departments for input on projects that they oversee, would be to set up a meeting with yourself and your team or teams for each event and sit down with all of those departments at one time and go over what your functional plans are. So the information that was submitted was very general about, this is overarching what it's going to be, so the response was, these are the types of things that you would need, traffic mitigation, parking, emergency response, those things. And formulating those plans together for submission to those departments would give them something to give you direct feedback on.
I thank you. I remind you that I did approach the department in December with the initial three proposals and here we are in March, so I'm more than happy to attend such a meeting.
And we can schedule that meeting.
Thank you.
And if it needs to be done prior to the Board of Selectmen's meeting on the second, you can do that.
I just feel like this is something that goes through the Board of Selectmen, so we don't have the power to issue a permit for a special event.
I'm not sure exactly what kind of guidance we could give you as far as application to the Board of Selectmen. We certainly, we probably will have plenty to say on the upcoming items and other things, I'm sure will come up in discussion.
You mentioned that you had a couple--
Yeah.
--tweaks to this.
I would welcome that input.
Share to share those with us, so we can discuss it as it pertains to this document.
I think it would be best if you actually looked at the document between the next meeting and now. General comments that I could share now would be that a number of people gave input to that. There was a range of opinion from, one of the points was that-- there should not be caps on the number of events per property. I can share that there was a cap, we put in a cap. I believe in reasonableness, so I advocated for caps, not to exceed numbers of events frequency in the property. So again, I would request you to look, to review it with the intent that it's designed to protect large properties from further subdivision.
So just from the timing perspective, we owe feedback on this when?
April 9th is when the Board of Selectmen are meeting.
So April 9th, and we have another meeting between now and April 9th?
We have April 8th.
April 8th, all right, so would that give enough time for them to get our input?
Yeah, I can walk it into the meeting with the feedback.
So I think what is going to happen is, we're going to go through this tonight and document what our recommendations are, would be for changes to this document, but we're going to be doing that without having seen your document. So the next time that we would be able to see it would be at the next meeting, which is just one day before the Board of Selectmen, so we could provide them with our input, but just like we don't have visibility to your document tonight, that's not usually enough time for the members to read and digest and understand. So we can do that, we, you know, we could put it onto the agenda for revisit after we review your document at our next meeting, but my concern is that doesn't give the Board of Selectmen a whole lot of time to look at any revisions that we make to our initial recommendation.
Right. What I would do, I would also forward, they would have a copy of my document as well.
Oh, so they already have that, or they will have that?
They will have that.
Okay, cool. That's good, then, okay. So then they can take both pieces of input and use that as input. But yeah, we can't really, I can't make comment on your document because I haven't seen it and we, it sounds like we just got it today, so usually we need a little bit more lead time before we can ingest that stuff.
Well, I started out with some question in my mind about this appointment, number six and number 10, and I've backtracked on my email to confirm what I had thought. And I emailed our Land Use Director with questions about, okay, so I went to the Board of Selectmen meeting on the 19th and the day after that, on the 20th, I emailed the question about having a discussion, because they were on our agenda, to have a joint meeting, to have a discussion about process, substance and form specific to large public events. And I wanted to have that discussion between the planning board and the Board of Selectmen because the planning board sets the zoning and the Board of Selectmen grant special permits and licenses.
Well, there is no special event permit current.
Right.
It's a policy the Board of Selectmen is working on putting together.
Right.
What Dr. Massey has applied for is three entertainment licenses, which are currently codified in the Board of Selectmen's policies. And that's what the hearings were held on.
And what I remember hearing from back when Whalen Park was still in function, that they were required to come to the Board of Selectmen every week to get a special event permit for specific things going on at the recreational, at the amusement park.
I can't speak to that. I believe that the Board of Selectmen's policies have been updated since Whalen Park was operational.
Didn't you say they don't have a policy on it?
They don't have a policy on special events, they have a policy on entertainment licenses.
Okay.
I can't speak to what was done when Whalen Park was operating. That was almost 20 years ago at this point. I have a suspicion that there's a number of changes that have been made to the Board of Selectmen's policies and the way that they've operated. So this special event permit is intended to be a policy through the Board of Selectmen that captures an over, like, almost like an umbrella permit over the individual permits that other boards and departments would issue to sort of coordinate the feedback from those departments and issue them in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen for the special event permit. It covers public events on private property and private events on public property. It wouldn't cover public events on public property or private events on private property. So it would avoid people having large family gatherings where everybody who comes is interrelated in some way, it wouldn't affect children's birthday parties, those sorts of things. It would be geared towards large events that are bringing the public from town and out of town and out of state. There's an individual who's contacted us recently for an event that would be covered under this on a property elsewhere in town that is looking to use this as a guideline for how they approach the town to permit their event. So there are events out there looking to operate in town that this would benefit those individuals as well as the town in ensuring that everything is tied together.
All right, I guess I'm really not real clear on everything that's going on here. I wish I could be, I wish I was.
Well, thank you. What I hear is that either the Land Use Director will be in touch with myself or I'll be in touch with the Land Use Director as regards attending a meeting with relevant town department representatives.
What I heard was that what you had submitted to the Land Use Director was later in the afternoon and he will forward that onto the board and at some time in the future we can have a discussion about it?
Well, there were two submissions, there's one earlier today, which I agree with you, correct, as you said, I was speaking more to the December proposals.
Yes, you will, I will be in touch with you and we have a date and time.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would you allow a follow-up question?
Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street, obviously resident of Lunenburg, but this question comes as my membership on the Board of Health. It's my understanding that these three events were discussed already in the department head meeting and to the best of my knowledge, no feedback has come out of that meeting back to the applicant. Is that correct or incorrect?
That is incorrect.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a really weird meeting. So I guess--
Another question?
Good evening, I'm Kathleen Winook, 503 Holman Street. Your gentlemen may already be aware that Mr. Massey has a letter that's been submitted to him by Gary Rhodes, that is basically a cease and desist letter, asking him to no longer hold events. So I'm kind of confused as to why this discussion is even being had, given that. Were you aware of this? Were you aware of this?
I was.
Okay, alright, I'm just, just want to bring that up, that since there was a cease and desist letter that's been sent to Mr. Massey, I just wondered how that figured into this conversation.
Mr. Massey does have the right of appeal to the zoning board, and he does have the right to request, he has entertainment licenses currently in front of the Board of Selectmen, which are a separate path from zoning, so the Board of Selectmen can, in theory, issue entertainment licenses that may or may not be able to be legally exercised. And the information he's requesting is under the umbrella of the entertainment license. So in filling our duties to a resident who's filed the permit and to the Board of Selectmen to provide them with the most complete information that we can, we would move forward with entertaining the discussion about the events and how they would be handled, in the event that A, the Selectmen wish to have that information and wish to issue the entertainment licenses. Again, that's outside of this group and outside of town staff. And B, in the event that an appeal to the zoning board was successful and the building inspector's determination was overturned.
Okay, thank you.
I feel that we should skip to six and come back to five?
That sounds fair.
Come on up, I opened the door.
Public input is good.
It is good to be open-minded. My name is Steve Weaver, 288 Holman Street. And Mr. Massey came to the board, the Planning Board, several years ago to do something with his property also, and that was on the verge of being denied, but he chose to withdraw the application.
If I may interrupt you, I believe you're talking about the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Yes.
This is not the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Okay.
He did not come before us?
Okay, thank you. Okay, but I'm trying to think that, why a person that holds 29 events that has been documented by the building commissioner would be rewarded when he held these events illegally? Why would he be rewarded by being able to get a permit or get a variance for that property when it wasn't allowed several years ago? So those are some of the questions that I'd like to ask and for you gentlemen to take into consideration in it. I know some of you may know Mr. Massey personally, and, you know, I mean, but I'm just hoping that everything's fair and open when this is taken into consideration. Thank you.
I hope so too, thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Points of information. The Selectmen have the right to issue their own license as they see fit. I don't know that they would agree that it is a reward or a benefit. They're bound by the statute for the entertainment license, and so that's not anything this board has purview over. And as far as a variance, the town of Lunenburg does not grant use variances. It's expressly prohibited through our zoning bylaws. So any change would either be a determination by the zoning board that the building inspector's determination or enforcement action was incorrect, or would be the creation of a new use that would allow these events to happen on properties located in whichever zoning districts are assigned to them.
Okay, so I would prefer that we skip five and come back to it, and then move to six?
You're the chair?
You were just up here. Come on, alright.
I'm only up here just to comment on one thing I heard. 29 events are ill-founded, non-investigated. I would challenge anybody to sit with me and discuss those. One example that I would like to share is even the Lunenburg Flower Garden people were criticized for coming over to my house. One, I invite anybody to invite them over, they're lovely people. They enjoyed my property, and to the point of they're an independent private club. I invited them in that capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. So we are going to move on to process, substance, and form specific to large public events. Board discussion. As Adam had said before, this was promulgated by an email from me, and I looked at my email, I sent it to Adam at 106, and at 111, on the 20th, I received the special event permitting that we're going to be discussing in item 10, which was a complete surprise to me, simply because I had not followed the Board of Selectmen meeting from the 14th, and I think it might have been one meeting before that?
Yeah, a couple meetings.
So my ignorance, I hadn't followed up on it. But my, the reason that this is on here, apparently at my request, is because I wanted to have this discussion with the Board of Selectmen when we had a joint meeting together. So it really pretty much, and that was, again, before I understood that there was a draft in form on special event permitting. So since special event permitting is not in our purview, it's not something that we do. I'm not entirely sure. I mean, I was CC'd on it when it went through the department head's distribution.
It went to departments and boards and committees.
Yeah, so you guys didn't receive a copy of it on the 20th?
You're talking about this, right?
Yes, I received a copy of this on the 20th.
Right, yeah, that's funny, it's funny, I received it right after sending an email to you asking a question about the counts. I was like, you know, and I was like, either I missed that, it was the same type of situation. Because obviously there's a lot of conversation going on about this right now, so I was trying to get some clarity on the regulation as it exists. But I understand that we don't have a lot of input, but I think that this special event permit guideline, we certainly have the right to provide our inputs on, correct?
Sure, and that's why it was provided.
So would we be doing that under item six, or we'd be doing that under item 10, special event permit?
That's certainly up to you, as the board.
It's the same thing, correct?
I believe so, and six apparently was at my request, so, and again, it was before I received a copy.
Alright, so we have six, we've already started talking about it, so let's talk about it.
Yeah, so let's combine this with the special event permit discussion. Okay, super.
So.
So this has to do with large public and private events as well, so have we all had a chance to review this?
I believe we have. I have a marked up version of it with a lot of comments at home, and I left it there. I tried to quickly recreate all my comments as I scanned through it. So one of the, the first thing that I wanted to provide input from, particularly from the Planning Board, is that there's no consideration for zone in the special events. And so I was concerned that if it covers every zone, that putting restrictions would pretty much exclude commercial entities that would be normally allowed to have events. So let's say if I wanted to put something equivalent to the Hatch Shell up that has some weekend concerts, would that no longer be allowed to be done because I'd be limited to four events a year? Even if it was a commercial property?
This was something that was originally discussed with the Board of Selectmen in there. There had been a clause in here about properly zoned properties, and they, it was removed through some discussion. If something like the Hatch Shell were to exist, it would need to be on a property that was zoned for that, and so it wouldn't be...
But even if it is zoned for that, this still says it would apply to it. That's what my concern, so can we get language in here that says, when it's describing a special event, that it would say, "on a property not normally zoned for such an event?" Or "not normally zoned for the use"? Because you shouldn't need a special permit to do something on a piece of property that's normally...
Correct, and something that's zoned for, that wouldn't, that would be part of the use of that property, so it would be allowed. A question was raised at a Board of Selectmen's meeting about an artist open house. An artist who has a studio, who does their work there, who sells their work from that to invite people in and watch them work. That would be a business transaction, it's part of the business of their day-to-day. It would be similar to if a wine retailer within the bounds of their business were to have one of their labels come and provide tasting within the store. That's, if it's in the bounds of their commercial enterprise, and if they were to do it at an external site, then it might qualify under this as a public event on a private property or on...
Right, yeah, that's a great example, because I think that a wine tasting at the wine shop in the center of town would not have to get a special permit to have a wine tasting.
I would hope not.
So I just thought the language in this was way too broad, so I was really concerned about that. The other thing that I thought might warrant some discussion was the four events per calendar year. There is no time base, or is, how was four chosen? Is that just the...
Honestly, it was kind of, you know, six seems like a lot, two doesn't seem like enough.
So four seems like... Quarterly seems...
And originally there hadn't been a limit, and the Selectmen felt that they needed guidance on how many could reasonably be permitted, so we ended with four. Again, quarterly seems like a special...
Well, it's not quarterly, it's four times a year.
Four per year, but...
So I could have one every week for one month. And that would be four in one year. Yeah, so I would, I was a little concerned about this, because let's say that you have a road race or those kind of events, and it seems like, you know, you could have one of those almost every weekend or every other weekend.
And that would be on public property? So it limits events to private property?
It doesn't say that.
It does, it says per private property.
Held on public property or an event open?
With a maximum of four events per private property. With the idea that municipal property is for use and enjoyment of all, and so it's reasonable to expect municipal property to host a multitude of events. And so what this does is it shapes and gives people a guideline for creating those events on public property in a way that is more standardized?
Okay, so there's no restriction of the number of events that you would have on public property? Only a restriction on the number of events you would have on private property?
That's correct.
And I, again, I would assert that that private property should have some kind of zoning reference, such that it's something that those events would not be considered normal for that property.
So does that change your thoughts on the number, or just...
No, the number's fine, I think, well, I shouldn't say it's fine, but I was just curious how it was chosen. I don't have a big opinion on whether it should be higher or lower. But I can see if it's private property on property that's not normally zoned for such a thing, four seems like a pretty reasonable number to me. So another area that I had a concern with was the exemptions. I didn't like the exemption about private membership organizations where members and guests are permitted would be exempted from the special event. It seems to me that it'd be relatively easy just to establish a private membership organization and then invite any guest that wants to come. And if you sell tickets to that event, that constitutes an invitation. And so I can just establish a club, I'm not wearing my sweatshirt, but Lunenburg Snow Rios, for example, is a private member organization. We could host an event every week that we sell tickets to, and we would then be exempt by the special event guidelines. It just doesn't seem like it would make sense.
Have you actually had a special event that you've got a license or permit for?
No.
Okay.
No, but I'm just saying we would have the ability to do that, because we're a private organization. It would be very simple to establish a private organization and completely bypass these guidelines. It's a big loophole, in my opinion. Being in Planning Board, I hate loopholes, because we seem to get subjected to them periodically. Do you want me to just keep going through my feedback?
Tim, do you have anything imperative to...
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, yeah.
Then you go through yours, okay. I have a concern with the timing. So it says, "events are prohibited from conducting activities after 2200 and before 0600", and then it goes on to talk about the usage of loud music and things like that, and public address system. It just seemed to me 6:00 AM is pretty doggone early to having the band start cranking up.
And I think that the idea is not that the loudspeaker starts at 6:00 AM. The Selectmen have the ability to condition the permits they issue and could say, you know, "no loudspeaker used prior to 10". Often, road races and those type of things would start earlier in the morning, especially setup and the like. So the intent was not that, "6:00 AM you're going to turn the loudspeaker on", it was just, you know, you don't have events that are going, starting early, early in the morning and going late, late at night.
Yeah, so maybe they can clarify the language then around that aspect of it, loudspeakers, amplified music, yada, yada, yada. Maybe they should say, "are circuit regulated and will be issued time criteria" or something, of when they can be used, that's, you know, an additional part of the permit or something. Because the way I read this, I would be thinking that the event that's taking place next door to me is going to start at 6:00 AM. That seems kind of early to have the loudspeakers and bullhorns going off. I was a little bit confused about the recreational use of drugs. When they say, "at any permitted special event that takes place on town of Lunenburg property", I'm asserting from reading that, that that means Lunenburg property owned by the town, not property in the town of Lunenburg, correct?
Yep.
Alright, so again, I had a little bit of concern with, you have a general public access event on private property that we're then deeming is okay for recreational use of drugs?
I don't know that you can limit that. We do have a general bylaw that prohibits the consumption of marijuana in public, so town of Lunenburg property, or property owned by the town of Lunenburg, would certainly be considered public and would fall under the... be considered public and would fall under the prohibition under that bylaw. I don't know that you can limit the consumption of a legal substance on private property, even if it's a public event.
So it just seemed odd that we have this, you know, strict compliance with the Town of Lunenburg policy with regards to alcohol, but do whatever you want with regards to marijuana or recreational drugs.
I don't think that there are-
It just seemed, it seemed a little bit odd that the policy was written that way. I'll just leave it as input. The tents and sleeping trailers, I don't sure I understand the required for an inspection and permits from the Town of Lunenburg and Fire Department for a camping trailer? So if I bring my camping trailer to someone's event that is multi-day, I have to have that camping trailer inspected by the Fire Department?
No, the second paragraph exempts-
No, it just exempts small trailers like pop-ups.
Are you talking like an RV?
Well, RV or a regular camping trailer, right? Something that is, you know, like my camping trailer is not a pop-up. It also has a stove in it that has an open flame. So it would be a violation of this on two purposes, meaning that if there was an overnight event, no one can bring a camping trailer to it. And it just seems like, the restrictions seemed a little bit above and beyond what So that was my camping input, and then my last piece of input until others speak and I get more ideas, is this flow chart doesn't line up with the details of the document. In the details of the document, there's this whole process about a certificate of insurance that has to come back, and then a final issuance once a binder is submitted, and that is not in this flow chart. So I think the flow chart needs to have the insurance stuff in it, and then the final issuance of the permit, if we are indeed going to require all of that.
The insurance would be part of the application.
This says-
And then the final issuance would come with the issuance of the, so there's a step between the hearing and the issuance of the, or the, I guess there's two additional steps that would come down at the bottom, which would be vote to on special apartment issuance, and then it would be, if voted, submission.
Right, and then issuance of final-
And then the issuance of final.
Correct. Yeah, because you're not gonna go pay for a insurance certificate if you're not gonna be allowed to have the event. Right, so you gotta get approved for it first, then you go take the hassle to get any insurance, then you gotta come back and submit the binder to get your final permit. Thank you. Okay, so I will-
I'm up.
You're up, sir.
I feel like we need to have a trigger for the number of people that constitutes a special event.
They actually wanted to take that out. There was a trigger of 50 people or more, and they said that the private event on public property, or public event on private property was a, more in line with their thought on what would trigger the need for this, as opposed to size.
I just look at this as becoming a somewhat lengthy process, and I feel like you need to have a trigger point that, I mean, there's a lot of work that goes into going through the process, but in terms of four events per private property, I think we need to clarify, is that per lot, per ownership? Who's hosting the event versus who owns the parcel? In other words, if you own three parcels of land that are all contiguous, can you now get 12 events? Because one event's on this lot, one event's on that one. With the drug and alcohol segment, I think we need to have some clarification that, like, are these people served safe, certified? Are they, I feel like with a lot of this process in general, if I was going to open up a bar in town, there's a whole set of guidelines that goes along with that process, served safe and-
There is as well for the one-day beer and wine licenses. You need to have a tip-certified bartender, and so all of that would go into it.
Okay.
The BYOB is only available as it exists currently, and I will have to look, but I don't believe it's available to anybody but common vichyler holders, which is a restaurant or a place that is serving food, so I don't, and, you know, if people are going to hold a public event on private property and allow people to consume alcohol that they bring, I'm not sure what the legal ground on that is, but I don't believe that there's a, they're not serving them, so-
It's a liability for the owner of the property, but-
Correct.
It's not a liability for the town, as far as I know.
And I guess that would speak to the insurance, too, to-
Correct.
Because that's pretty special insurance, so maybe we should roll that into the certificate of insurance requirements, as well as alcohol liability. And then in regards to the cleanup, you know, the last sentence, the town will arrange the cleanup and charge the applicant. I feel like if you're gonna have a policy like that, you really need to itemize those fees ahead of time, and make it clear to the applicant that if they fail to do the cleanup work, they will be charged X amount of dollars per man-hour and so much to their disposal, so they know that prior to the permit. In terms of parking, is there, I feel like, you know, when we review other plans, it's so many parking spaces per square foot.
For retail, yes, for restaurants, it's different. So that's the hard thing with this, is maybe per person or something.
Yeah. I mean, this is a one-time thing, but I feel like there should be some sort of provision in there that, for two reasons. One is, I am working under the assumption that these people aren't in this business, because otherwise they would have a full-time operation, that they're hosting special events, and if that's the case, they may need some feedback as to, "Oh, jeez, if I'm gonna have 100 people here, I need 50 parking spaces," or whatever. When it comes to the tents and sleeping trailers, will that, the flame-resistant certificate, will that be reviewed by the building inspector and then a permit issued?
Correct. When you have a tent over 200 square feet, it requires a building permit, and generally those are gonna be like the big white tents you see at weddings and other events, and those are considered commercial tents, and they require permits prior to being erected.
So that's basically two pop-up 10-by-tens.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, that's pretty small.
Really? That requires a building permit?
I'm almost positive a 200-square-foot tent is what requires. I mean, it's been looked at by the building commissioner, and he didn't have any-
That seems really-
Restrictive.
Restrictive. I didn't even pick up on that, but that's a 10-by-20 tent.
Yep.
That's smaller than a shed.
We use those at the farmer's market.
Yeah. The pop-ups are 10-by-10, right?
Yes.
Typically, but we have a pop-up 10-by-20. Well, we don't, someone, one of the vendors does.
In terms of the buffer zone, 100 feet, I feel like we need clarification as to what the footprint of the event is. Are you 100 feet from any use of the property? In other words, you're gonna have your event here at the house, but if your parking car's immediately adjacent to your neighbor, does the parking require the 100-foot buffer?
Yes.
Okay, so just that we define that no particular use of the quote-unquote "event." So no trailers parked there for sleeping, no parking, no porta-potties, whatever it is. In terms of the first aid, I feel like that needs a trigger point. In other words, you know, the minute you have over so many people on the property, it automatically triggers that you have a EMT or somebody on staff. With the event layout, it, I mean, I hate to say it, but some of this stuff, like when you start looking at, you know, location of any budding houses, is this engineered plans? Like, who's certifying that the layout of the diagram is actually-
You can access that from the town's GIS, and it has recent aerials that would identify where people are located and-
I just look at, you know, the list of stuff here, and in terms of layout, is it gonna be acceptable for somebody to come in with, you know, a sketch-up document? And, I mean, not saying either way.
No, no, I-
I would think so.
And ultimately, I would believe so, but that would ultimately be up to the Board of Selectmen to decide what they feel is appropriate. If you're on a four-acre parcel, and you're saying, "Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna use three acres of it to do this," they may want something a little more specific. If you say, "We're on 300 acres, and we're gonna be right here in the middle," it may be less of an issue. You know, "We're gonna use this 10 acres right here that's cleared in the middle." So I would expect that the level of detail that they want would be on a case-by-case basis, depending on, A, the situation and the use, and B, on where it's located.
Yeah. On the wetlands part of things, I don't know conservation's process well enough to say how that would work, but in my mind, are they gonna have to file for determination of applicability to-
No, I think in general, if someone were holding an event that they were, they had a river or something they felt was wetland, the conservation administrator would work with them to say, "Here's the areas we'd like you to stay away from." And he has done so in the past.
And then, is there any sort of appeal process to this?
There's none built into this. I would have to review the Selectmen's policies to see if they have an appellate process in there.
And then in terms of the process flow, in my mind, there's a few different layers here that just need to be organized so that it kind of guides the applicant in the right direction, in terms of, you need a building permit for your tent, you need approval from Board of Health, and how to, if I'm sitting on the Board of Selectmen, I would think that I'd wanna see a packet roll through that has everything itemized out, and all of that stuff should be pretty much cleared before it gets in front of the Board of Selectmen to answer as many questions and kind of drill down to the actual application here. And then, I guess my comment in general is, I feel like going back to the zoning aspect of things, because if you have a property that you wanna use for more than the four events per year, I couldn't find anything in our use table that would allow this type of use. To me, this is a function facility, and if, I'm not sure that, yeah-
It's outdoor entertainment, but it's not allowed in, it is allowed in some of the zones.
Yeah.
And I think that's what a lot of this falls under, particularly when it's talking about loudspeakers, bands, and stuff like that.
To me, if, looking at entertainment, I think there's, you know, you have a band playing and everybody's coming to see that band, but say you're gonna host a wedding.
That, that's also outdoor entertainment, I believe. If it's an outdoor wedding.
So I agree with you, a venue or function facility is one of those things that we don't cover, and-
Function facility is defined in the bylaw.
It is, it's defined, and it's an accessory use to bed and breakfasts and restaurants, and I believe farms in certain districts. But it's not a standalone use, that's correct.
And I guess my point with that is, you know, digging into which zones are appropriate, and, you know, my understanding is this is permissible on any zone right now, so maybe it's something the Board needs to consider to clarify that in some ways.
And I think what has been stated by the building commissioner in the past is a singular event on a private property doesn't change the use, it's a singular event. The repeated use of a property for events would be something that may trigger what he would consider a change in use, and would then require there to be a zoning definition associated with that use.
Right, yeah, that was my understanding, too, but that triggering number has never been defined before.
And I don't know that it would ever be defined. It's one of those-
Yeah, I know when I see it.
Amorphous things, yeah.
Right, yeah. So I do have a question about the open to the general public. What constitutes open to general public? If I host a party that I invite people, and they invite people, and they invite people, is that considered a private event or a special event? Because it's not open to the general public, it was by invitation, but no one's excluded.
I think in general, if you were to invite people and they were to invite people, in most instances, it's not gonna get to the point where some guy that only one person, who is like a fourth person out invited, shows up.
But I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, what's the difference between me having a big keg party with hundreds of people at my house every weekend versus a special event? What's the difference between those two things? Because that's not a special event, right? That's just kind of having a keg party and annoying his neighbors, unless they come.
And I think eventually someone would complain enough that you get shut down, but a special event is organized-
Again, without a definition, what would be the justification for shutting it down? Because if it's a private event, it's not open to the general public, so therefore-
Then you wouldn't qualify as a special event.
Correct, so you wouldn't have a justification for shutting it down.
Well, it'd depend if there were minors or noise complaints.
You could always find-
No, I, I understand your point.
You could always find violations of the law at any event, I'm sure, but the point that I was trying to make is, is that-
Generally-
There should be clarity around what exactly we're trying, I shouldn't say "we," what exactly they're trying to provide guidelines around, right? Because if I look at just this definition, it's very easy to sidestep it and do something that would make it not a special event. All you have to do is do it by invitation, and it's not open to the public anymore.
And this is something that has been discussed over and over, and-
Well, if I limit it to a specific organization, then it's not open to the public anymore. It's limited to that organization is invited, right? But that organization could be huge, it could be thousands of people in it, but it's still not open to the public. So I think they really need to think about what it is they're trying to accomplish and how they want to identify what qualifies and doesn't qualify. And maybe they wanna just do that in terms of the event itself, as opposed to trying to identify the triggers for it. It's just the feedback.
Tanner, is the 50-person limit, is that in this document?
No.
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 Okay. I didn't think it was. I just, in general, I think both Ken's comments and my comments all rotate around having some specific, concrete numbers and guidelines that clearly interpret what's what, you know? I mean, if, you know, hypothetically, Jay Gatsby moves into town- what, you know? I mean, if, you know, hypothetically, Jay Gatsby moves into town and throws lavish pardons every weekend, it's not a special event, right?
It's Jay Gatsby's lifestyle.
Has the same impact, so...
Yeah, that's the point that I was trying to make, same thing. You know, there's, there's nothing that distinguishes. It, and likewise, when you establish what the trigger events are, you need to be careful, well, now, if I have a Christmas party at my house, do I have to file for a special permit?
And that's, that was sort of the-
Right? So there's all this, there's all these things you have to be very careful about when you draw that line, because, um, all of a sudden, all normal activity that people do on their properties is also gonna be regulated. And we say, well, never, we never regulated that before, why do I have to do anything special about that? I was just having a party with my friends, you know, and they were all invited, why do I have to file for a special permit and go get a million-dollar liability policy for it?
So, I guess, first off, I wanna know who drafted this?
I did.
You did. And was it under the direction specifically of the Board of Selectmen?
It was something that they had asked for to be put together.
At a meeting, okay. Right, at a meeting?
Uh, yeah, I would, I would infer that it was at a meeting. I don't specifically recall the instance.
Okay. And, and isn't it, in fact, reactionary to a specific property?
Not to my knowledge.
Uh, all the recent happenings and goings-on, I mean, this, it seems apparent to me that this is reactionary to a specific property.
Well, this has been in process since August.
Okay. Um, there doesn't seem to be any size specification, limitation, exemption, inclusion at all. I mean, you could be talking to, about an existing non-conforming 5,000-square-foot parcel, or you could be talking about a thousand-square-foot forest. I mean, thousand-
Acre forest, yeah.
Right?
Yes.
So, I mean, is it, is it implying that a 5,000-square-foot parcel versus a thousand-square-foot, a thousand-acre parcel are basically capable, competent, and allowed the same uses?
No. I don't, I don't think it suggests that at all.
Well, it's effectively, it's effectively clumping everything together, all the different properties, everything. Um, I noticed that in the, in the buffer, buffer zone is the only place that I noticed that there was any possible request for a reduction of anything. Upon submission of a written request supported by the documentation of the Board of Selectmen may reduce this distance based on the size and scope of the event. And the buffer zone is the only thing that I see in here that's afforded that.
Size-related, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That, I don't think that's incorrect. I mean, I don't think the rest of it puts specific limits, I mean, other than maybe the, the hours?
Okay. Um, now, we've recently reinstated the Grange. The Grange is a nonprofit organization. Um, now, what if they, uh, got together with a 150-acre parcel, or any other farm, or any large property to hold a large function open to the public? Then they would be required to apply for this special permit?
Correct, yeah.
And they would need to conform to all these things?
In as much as the Selectmen felt that was appropriate for the event, yes.
Okay.
So, let me just ask a question. So I assume, I'm, I'm just, for a benchmark, I'm gonna use the Stillman event, because we have it every year, it happens once a year. I consider that open to the public. Um, I think it would be similar to what a Grange event would have. Do they currently abide by all the things that are listed in here?
I think in general, they have. Um, they've done so in a more ad hoc way. I think when that started, it was a function of the Turkey Hill Lions Club.
Mm-hmm.
And they worked with the police chief, the fire chief, EPW director, uh, and I, again, I'm not going to say specifically, I haven't been involved in the planning of that event, uh, but I would expect that the majority of what's in here that would apply to them, they have abided by.
All right, 'cause it seems, that as an example, to me, seems extremely well organized.
Yeah, I mean, they have, they have a specific parking area, they have a traffic plan, they have detailed-
They even put a crosswalk on, onto the road for it, so, um, it, it seems like they did everything right. I was just curious if they complied with, with this, or if this goes above and beyond what they do, and it makes it even more difficult.
No, I believe this is probably right in line with-
Okay.
With the things that they have done.
Um, I have one more question. Street furniture? Is that something we even have in Lunenburg?
Village Center.
There might be some around.
Street furniture? We can't put signs on street furniture. I'm like, what is street furniture?
There are some benches around, some trashcans.
Not many trashcans.
Is this policy meant to replace the entertainment license, or-
No, it's, it runs concurrently or parallel, and it would be, again, sort of an umbrella over the other permits being issued, so the Selectmen are issuing something final that encompasses all of the others. It doesn't specifically replace anything. It doesn't take any, any power or authority away from individuals or, or boards. It just codifies them all coming together under one.
Um, so, uh, so municipal, municipal, as, as everything else exempts themselves from everything, right?
That's generally how it works.
Okay, so I guess I'd, I'd like to hear from Anna Butter to any town property that, uh, holds functions on how they like the repeated events as compared to Anna Butter, to, uh, the Stillman Fair, or-
I think the example given for, for the town exemption was the band concerts on the, at the gazebo.
Right. No, everybody loves those.
Those are exemptions.
Things like the, um, the Cultural Council's Arts Fair, Cruising Night that the Police Boosters Association puts on.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, any of the events that may happen from the senior center, the, the crafts fairs that are put on, uh-
Bonfire?
Uh, well, I don't, I, I have not been here when there was a bonfire, so-
Ah, that's too bad.
My understanding is that is a, a long way from coming back.
Yeah, well, apparently, uh, having fun in this town also is a long way from coming back. Um, we used to have all kinds of recreational opportunities, uh, and there used to be many, many people with properties that, that allowed people to come to their property and enjoy it. Um, and I just, this, this seems reactionary and, and I just, I don't, I don't agree with a lot of it.
So I have another question. So, in one statement, we say, "Events that recur multiple times within a calendar year are not considered special events." Then we say, "Special events, you can have four per property per year." So, are we implying that if you have the same event twice, it's no longer a special event? If I host two weddings, is it no, is that a wedding?
Wedding, you generally don't open weddings up to the public. Those are-
Okay.
Usually private events on private property.
So what if I host a wedding every weekend? Now I'm a venue.
Well, then, again, you become a venue, and then you run foul of zone.
I think we need some guidance around that, right? I think the, the, the problem is that the, the current zoning doesn't have the, the trigger, triggering count, and I think that's important. Because right now, it's really subjective, right? So somebody might think one event a year is too many, and another person thinks 350 is perfectly acceptable. And, um, you know, Mr. Ebersol, when he was a Selectman, I thought, put it really well. He says, you know, if I have a, a, if I host a wedding on my property a couple of times a year, then that's great, you know, and I'm doing a favor for my friends, but if I do that every weekend, I become a venue, and that's commercially used. And I, and I think that someplace, and this is similar to what I posted in a public forum, someplace in there is the dividing line of what constitutes the use change. And I know that today, we defer that, um, to the, um, to the Building Commissioner. Uh, but I think some guidelines around what that should be would make a lot of sense, as opposed to having it just be subjective of a single person. I don't know if they can incorporate something-
I, in, in the special events?
Yeah.
Well, it would have to be codified.
Is now four gonna be the triggering thing? If I, if I host four, if I go to host a fifth event, that locks me over, but if it doesn't qualify as a special event, then nothing would trigger it. And again, that's what I was saying, where we're being so specific about what a special event is, is a ton of things I can do that would change the use of my property that would not trigger a special event.
Mm-hmm. And I think that, you know, I, I have not seen any zoning bylaw that codifies a trigger for this creates that use. Um, it's not the easiest thing to put into words, uh, and it, it can be different for different types of uses and properties and events, and, um, and I think that's generally why people don't codify it, is 'cause there isn't a, there isn't a standard, there isn't a, a universal trigger. Uh, I mean, it, it's, it's something I, I can bring up to the Building Inspector. I, I wouldn't, um, I wouldn't venture to say that I, I would have an easy answer on how to, to put that into zoning. Um, like you said, it's kind of when you, you know it when you see it, and, and that's not necessarily the, the easiest thing to, to swallow either, if, if you're on the other end of it.
Hmm.
So, to follow along with my negative comments from before, um, traffic and parking, it stipulates all kinds of rules and regulations on putting vehicles on your private property, and then it further says something about "Traffic and parking plans shall not violate Chapter 332 of the Code of Lunenburg."
Correct.
Well, if we've already got a Code of Lunenburg about parking, why do we need to put more requirements on it?
Because the Chapter 332 involves specifically the roadways and how they're appointed and operated.
And it doesn't include access to and from private property?
Uh, I don't believe that it, it does.
That's a valid answer. Um, at the Board of Selectmen meeting that I was at, uh, there were four. There were private on public, public on private, but the public on public and the private on private, so the public event on public land. You've already explained the private on private land.
Mm-hmm.
Which I'm skeptical that that will not be lumped into something here that requires, um, but, so how about a public event on public property?
That's the first exemption. Town events held on town property.
Okay, so what if it's a private citizen that wants to have a public event on public property? Or what if it's, what if it's the Grange that wants to have a public event on public property?
Well, that would be a private event in such as the Grange is a private organization, and I understand they're nonprofit.
The whole, the whole idea behind Grange is community building, and they, they would likely want the public to attend any event that they hold. So, seeing-
But, but, but again, they would, by this, they would perfectly be allowed to.
Okay. Well, if that's what you read, that's not at all what I do, but, um... Anything more?
I think we just need more specifics in general, and I'm not a big fan of having a lot of subjective language in here.
There's a lot of subjective language.
Yeah, interpretation. I feel like, depending on the circumstances, any applicant could go in front of the Board. You could have two identical applications and have it fall one way or the other, and I'm not a big fan of-
Me neither.
Subjectivity. That's why I sit here, not on the ZDA.
All right. So, I'm wondering if there's anybody here that would like to have any discussion on the things that we've been talking about? Please.
Good evening. I'm Michael Ray Jeffries, 1170 Mass Ave. I think that, um, what really stands out, hearing the conversation tonight, and I think it's also related to the duty in general that you guys have as members of the Planning Board, I think we have a lot of opposition from residents when the use on residential property is different than residential property. Um, I think, you know, we're hearing from different people here, and I live next to, as I mentioned, the first time I stood before this board, I mentioned that I live next to a bunch of fields. Um, and I think a natural, you know, the biggest resource Lunenburg has to offer is its land, um, and I think we have to preserve it in as many ways as we can. I think it's reasonable that if someone like Mr. Massey, and I'll be honest, this policy seems directly in response to Mr. Massey, his activities on his property, but if Mr. Massey wanted to have one event a year, I mean, I don't know if anyone would be having this conversation. I think that most people would consider that to probably be reasonable, um, even if it was a two-day event that was music you ordinarily wouldn't want to listen to. But I think that when people buy a home, as, you know, I do, I know my mortgage payment, I'm on a 15-year, so I know what it is. You know, when I, when people pay their mortgage payment every month and they're living in home, I think that they have a reasonable right to expect that what's happening next door, while it's none of their business, it should be within the realm of residential activity with limited exception. So it seems that when we move outside of that space, that it becomes problematic. It seems as if what you guys, and I haven't seen the document you're looking at in front of you right now, it seems as if it's too much regulation to cover a problem or a concern that I think can be easily remedied, you know, with the Board of Selectmen opting to deny permits when they come before them, or to have a quota on how many they're gonna offer to any particular applicant. You know, I think that we can't dismiss the taxpayers like myself, like the other residents sitting here. I heard Mr. Massey's event. I live on Mass Ave, down the hill from the high school. I heard his event at my house. Um, and I don't think it was a problem for him to have it for two days. I really don't. But I think that when you're looking to do things multiple times in the course of a summer, at some point, someone has to say, wait a minute. I didn't choose to live next to a, a recreational venue, I chose to live next to a residential property. And so, I, I fear that we're expanding what that means too much. And for Mr. Massey, I agree with his intention, which is to have these community-building activities, to be able to, but I think that this taps into something that, you know, Ms. Adams, Mrs. Adams has brought up several times, we need open space in town, that if there was another location in Lunenburg for people to go to to have these events, I think that Mr. Massey's intention was to have these community-building activities that they can happen. So I would caution that we, that the Board proceeds in such a manner that allows activities on public lands for public goods and heavily restricts what can happen on residential property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Steve Weaver, 288 Holman Street. Um, I'd like you to reconsider the amount of four. Um, I, I, I don't know how many permits have been, special permits have ever been issued, um, in a year, but I think four for one, for one location is excessive. Um, Kenneth, uh, the snowmobile club has never had one.
No, I'm sorry, I, they've never gotten a permit for one?
That's right. Never had a permit for, for one. I've never had a special permit in all the years that I've lived in Lunenburg too, um, which is over 20.
What have you done that needed one?
Uh, most of, most homeowners don't.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so, I think that, um, it's only gonna be certain people, um, like Mr. Massey, that are gonna require this, and I think four a year is too, too many. Um, can you imagine a four-day Woodstock on a, on a parcel like that? Um, I just think that it's excessive, and, and with, uh, people camping overnight, uh, it's, it's, um, it's bringing up all kinds of issues. So anyways, I would, uh, ask if you would limit it to maybe two a year instead of four. I don't know where you reach that number four, but- But the majority of the people, I believe, in Lunenburg wouldn't ever have more than two a year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just to clarify, I think that we are only providing a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. It was our Land Use Director that drafted this for the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, okay. Well, that's why I'm asking why you're still drawing it up. Maybe two would be the magic number instead of four.
My recommendation would be definitely attend the Board of Selectmen meeting.
Yes, I plan on doing that, sir. But what the other gentleman said about having these on residential property, I think that's big, you know? So anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, please.
I'm Alonso, 284 Lancaster Avenue. I want to say that what Mr. Chenis brought up with, some of the things I brought up at the Board of Selectmen meeting. First of all, I think, and I think Mr. Cole also brought some of them up, is that the definitions are very, very vague, nebulous. As Mr. Chenis said, they were, he gave three or four examples of how you could get around the way it's worded right now. And I think it's all, you know, it's all way too much. And it's going to catch so many, so many other events that people do and want to do, whether you throw a graduation. How about two of your kids graduate the same year? One from, you know, high school and one from middle school or elementary or whatever. And, you know, you have an aunt and uncle's 50th anniversary. I mean, now you're all of a sudden, you got to look at getting a million-dollar policy. I mean, I think these are just way too vague, and I think it has to be very, very specific. But I think the thing that really needs to be specific are two things. First of all, the previous speaker just spoke about multi-day events. And I think if my history in town is correct, the trigger of this bylaw was one, and the only that I am aware of, multi-day event ever held in Lunenburg. Okay, that is where all the complaints came from. I would probably offer that multi-day events where people can camp and stay over and you need public facilities and you need safety issues, I would highly restrict those. In fact, almost to the point where they would be very difficult to have more than one a year. And maybe not even on private property. But all the other uses, I think, come down to the other real point that needs to be defined that was mentioned here in passing a few times. And that has to do with the Building Commissioner's decision. Is that in his thing, now, Mr. Massey has said tonight that the 29 events that he had are uninvestigated, but let's just use that number, even the Building Commissioner's number said that that was seven events a year. And I think the zoning, the underlying zoning really speaks to what is the normal, everyday use or regular, and I guess that's the key word, the regular use of a property. That's what the zoning is defining. And for the items that I saw Mr. Massey come forward with at the Board of Selectmen, which were three separate days, all in the afternoon, in the middle of the day, one of them was a little bit late, one crossed over into the early evening, I think six or seven o'clock. That is not envisioned as somebody who's having some venues. He has no formal foundation, I don't want to speak for him, but no formal foundation. And, and as, as somebody said, if they, if you, he talked about the Gardener's Club, the Turkey Hill Gardener's Club. If you know one member and you say, they said, you know what would be great? We're really looking for a venue where Mr. Allison talked about the Grange. And somebody approached Mr. Massey and said, we really look for a place that has land so we can have something outside. If he said yes to that, and he was allowed four or six of those in the middle of the day, I really would find it hard to believe that we would want to regulate something of that nature, to that degree. Because that's going to capture with a whole bunch of other people with a whole bunch of other events that are going to cause a lot of people heartache. And it's just inadvertent obstacles to people, what we would consider normal use. So I would, I would say those three things. I would say really focus on multi-day events and really try to restrict those or even discourage them, number one. Number two is I'd get a definition, but how many uses a year constitute a regular use? And I don't think four or six have to do with regular use. And, you know, those are the things that I would look to. And I appreciate the discussion. I think it was a very good discussion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. In response to that, zoning, zoning is for permanent use, and that's 365 days a year. So anything less than 365 days a year, not permanent, would be other than what's zoned for. So zoning is, again, for permanent daily use activity. Special events. I mean, there's a, there's a huge difference between four and 365. And, and I don't disagree that there are varying relations of, you know, what's appropriate, what's acceptable, what's tolerable, who thinks those various things. And I'd like to get back to the residential use, is that residents in town, can we, can we feel confident in saying that residents in town are all the same? And I would, I would expect the answer to be no. So would the residential use of a private property expected to be the same as considered by all the residents in town? I don't think so. So as private landowners, as individuals, I, I am hard pressed to say that there is any one thing that everybody finds acceptable or every, every one person finds unacceptable. And again, we're all private landowners. And, you know, I love the analogy that if you think, if you think you own your land, stop paying your taxes and see how long you own it. It's not going to be very long. It'll be taken. So and, and another comment that I've heard is that we are a community and all residents make up the community. And it takes, it takes good citizenry to be a good citizen, to be a good neighbor. And that goes both ways as well. If you disagree with how your neighbor uses their property, you can either ignore it, or you can adjust, or you can just sit around and complain about it. You know, the farming is exempted in town, in the state, right to farm. And I really wish it didn't stop there. Anyways. There's something that we really don't have much of a say on. I think we've had a good discussion, and thank you for that. Is there anybody else would like to say anything, please? You guys can fade it out.
Kathleen O'Nook, 503 Holman. I'll make this brief because honestly, I work all day. I would rather go home and sit with a glass of wine than be with you guys, although you're great. But we all know what. I live across from Eric Short. And every year, he has all schoolteachers over and he has a big party. And, you know, I'm fine with that because he says, you know, Kath, I'm having some cars over. I'm like, that's cool. I'm fine with that. It's when you start advertising events online. And there's a Facebook page and you're involving, in the case of, I believe, the LGBTQ event in July, you're inviting a Worcester organization to work with you. This is not someone just having a party, or having a wedding, or just having a kegger. It's someone who is having an event that's bringing in people from outside the town, outside the state. Brings in vendors who are bringing their wares, bringing their vehicles. There's setup time. There's time to break down. And lots of times, there are people who do stay overnight and do just camp in the woods. I mean, it may look like, oh, it's just this short little event, but it really stretches out into something a lot bigger. And, you know, the people on Holman Street and Windermere Street, which is also affected, we don't dislike fun. You know, we enjoy fun just as much as anyone. But I'll tell you, if the BSO were having concerts every week on Holman Street, I wouldn't like it. And I love the BSO. It has to do with respecting people's homes, why we bought homes, where we did, in a nice, quiet neighborhood, which is now starting to turn into something totally unexpected. So I just hope you will consider that. We're not just grumpy neighbors that don't like parties, don't like fun. We understand these things. But it's just, it's turned into something just totally out of control. So I hope you consider us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie Adams, William Strive. And I have pages of thoughts that I'll save for my own meeting. So just one comment, as a citizen, that just sort of bubbled up as I wrote and thought. In terms of zoning, a residential property just typically is not open to the public. And I think that's the key that rises up. I've been thinking about this topic for months anyways. But when I, when I think about it, no matter what type of residential property you're running, and you're right, people are doing all sorts of things on the residential property, hobbies, working on automobiles, this, that, and the other thing, and that's going to always differ. But in general, residential properties aren't open to the public. And so as I move forward, that's like the key topic. I think I sort of mentioned it at my meeting, that really comes to mind. And when you open something to the public, how public? And you could get a rush on a property where you're getting so many people coming to it that you didn't anticipate that you could create a real, you know, like public safety situation where too many people show up. And how do you turn them away? How do you quantify how many people showed up? So to me, it's open to the general public, not friends of friends, or let people know they can come on over to my house. But when things are open to the general public, they're in newspapers, they're on TV, they're on public Facebook pages, and they're truly open to the general public. And that's sort of where I think property-specific items, in my mind, come into play is residential properties. There's no example I could come up with where a residential property is open to the public.
Stillman?
I guess I would exempt farms from that concept. I mean, that's a different, I don't know. I mean, I'm just saying, this is just my general thought, is open to the public isn't something you anticipate when you live in a residential zone.
Yeah, but I think selling, selling wares at your farm is very different than like the yearly event they have at Stillmans. I don't, I don't consider me stopping there for coffee or donut or something like that like a public event. But when, when we have the Stillman event, that's, what is that called again?
Stillman Country Fair.
The Country Fair. When we have the Country Fair, that's an event. And that's a, I think we need to be careful, well, the town should be careful when they're crafting their definitions to be inclusive of things like that and not inclusive of all the other things that people like to do on their property. You know?
I don't normally bring my personal life and property into these meetings. But I was born onto a family farm that celebrated its 50th anniversary last year. A hundred acres. And I had five neighbors within probably close to a mile. Now I have 50 neighbors directly across the street. Now, if I applied the same logic to the arguments that I've heard tonight, then I would be very justified in saying that, well, residential uses themselves actually have become, oh, what's the word? Bothersome? And it's, and it all goes, it leads to the reasoning that I think that my family farm is the second-largest parcel in town that is occupied by a dwelling. They've all turned into condos or solar fields or wetlands, whatever. I don't know. But I understand that my opinions and my, and my, what I've spoken is quite a bit different probably than, than most. But understand that I was born here, I grew up a farmer, and I watched all these large parcels just go away. And, and I continually, persistently, and always hear the reason people come here is because they love all the farms and the beauty. Well, it doesn't last if you don't let people do what they need to, or they can, or they're able to with their property. So that's, that's my personal note.
Darren Massey, 300 Holman. So on, to that point, I would like to request this board's guidance and recommendations on how then do I protect the open space that I have left remaining under my personal ownership? And how do I, as a fellow resident, recommend other large property owners who have open space left, who are considering subdividing their property? So I look forward to your feedback, gentlemen. What recommendations you give me, including the special event possibility, so that we could protect some of the last large parcels remaining? We've heard about the track record. And as the planning board, many plans for subdivision have come before you. Many more will continue to because the market is strong in the next few years. Kindly give me guidance how we can protect these last remaining open space, privately-held, large parcels. I count eight. Look forward to your reply.
Arizona.
Steve Weaver, 288 Holman Street. I just have one question for Matthew. Out of that 50 years that your family has owned that parcel, how many special permits have you asked for over that?
None.
None, not a one?
Would you like to know how many things that we probably should have?
Sure. I mean, that's fair.
Quite a few.
Okay. So a dozen over 50 years?
Not even close.
Okay. All right. That's what I'm trying to get at, as far as the amount of events. The residents of Holman Street.
No, no, I'm sorry, not even close. We've had way more than 12.
Oh, way more?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, then, I still think that you haven't had 50, right?
Not in a year.
Okay. Well, I'm thinking that, you know, that, that's, still goes along with what I'm saying is two, two a year would be sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street. As this document moves forward towards public hearing, I think there's a lot of work that's got to be done on who has jurisdiction over what. Especially in the sections that you guys questioned about campers and, and stuff like that. There's no regulation and no inspection of those by the Board of Health, Fire Department, or anybody. As for the tents, that's the Fire Department, not the Building Inspector. There's not a building permit for a tent. That's a temporary structure. And the size of the tent is, I think, comes under mass general law. And I think two smaller tents, like you talked about, equaling that square footage, but not tied together, doesn't come under that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was simply making reference to the 10 by 10s as, as two of them were equivalent to the minimum, to the size that they were specifying.
And I know the city of Pittsburgh has a, does their permits through the Building Department for the tents and also like any sort of entertainment structures, like a stage or whatever. That all goes through the Building Department, so.
Anyone else? Okay, very good.
Glad we had that discussion, and I'm glad that we were included in it.
Do we feel like we should be addressing any of this in terms of zoning? One thing that I tripped over is, just in reviewing the bylaw in preparation for tonight's meeting, was in my mind, a lot of the discussion we've had tonight revolves. was, in my mind, a lot of the discussion we've had tonight revolves around essentially a function facility. It's not a bed and breakfast. It's not a private club. It's not really outdoor entertainment, at least in terms of the way I interpret the definition. So I look at it as a function facility. Currently, under our bylaw, that is only allowed as an accessory use to a bed and breakfast, a hotel, a farm, or a restaurant, which, depending on the use, those are permissible in various different zones. But it's only allowed as an accessory in the limited business residential district and the commercial district. And there's provisions built in there that require the building to be 3,000 square feet and two-acre lots. In my mind, that's a little bit contradictory in that the use, like the farm use, would be the most applicable use that would have at least two acres in the bigger buildings. But there's no farmland that I can think of in the commercial district or the limited business. So essentially, if somebody decides to have, you know, four special events a year and wants to grow that aspect of things, there's no opportunity for that. So, and I'm not trying to steer this one way or the other. It, to me, it just, there's some discrepancies there that I think we should address. Because right now, there really isn't much opportunity. If somebody wanted to come in, like, you know, while we used to have the Harley dos in the center of town, that is a function facility, that is, that's probably the only property I can think of realistically that's big enough to have the two acres and be in the limited business district and serve as a bed and breakfast and a function facility. So just something to think about.
Just, the function, my mic's really turned up, huh?
You don't want to hear what I'm saying.
I get, maybe I was mumbling before. The, this function facility here? So you're saying it's an accessory for a bed and breakfast, hotel, farm, and restaurant? But you can have a bed and breakfast anywhere, right? Bed and breakfast qualifies?
You can, but you can't have the function facility as an accessory use unless you're in the commercial district or the limited business residential district.
So, so that accessory use only applies to limited business?
Mm-hmm.
No, it's residential?
That's limited business residential, so that's the
Oh, okay, okay.
So not pure residential.
Gotcha.
And so if you had a hotel, we only permit hotels in, I think, industrial. It's a special permit in the commercial and the Whalom overlay. But if you look at those districts, I don't think there's many parcels that meet the rest of the criteria in terms of having two acres, 3,000 square feet of building, and so on. And even some of that is a little bit cumbersome in that the primary structure must be at least 3,000 square feet, and then additions to the floor areas, if any, shall not exceed 50% of the existing floor area. So if somebody had a large parcel with a thousand-square-foot building, they wouldn't be able to add more than 500 square feet to it. And so they could never meet the 3,000 square feet of floor area. So just food for thought. Because at the end of the day, I feel like, you know, hosting weddings and those type of activities are a better fit overall for the community than the more, I don't look at Lunenburg as being a high-rise hotel-type place. It's more of a bed and breakfast and more of a clean application, but.
Good?
I'm good.
Yeah?
Super.
Excellent. So you can make sense of that to transfer on to the?
I guess.
Board of Selectmen?
Wonderful. So we skipped over five?
So we covered four, six, and special events in 10?
Correct.
So we want to back up to five?
Well, and five is on the agenda, per the request of Ms. Bertram, who's not here tonight.
So then we should probably?
It's, I was gonna say, I don't know if you want to have the discussion and then continue it at the next meeting, or if you want to hold off until she's here to have the discussion.
Did anybody come to discuss the building reuse? No?
I'd may make a motion. We table that to the next meeting when Ms. Bertram is here.
Second.
We don't have to have a vote, do we?
Yeah, may as well.
All right.
You have a motion in a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
If I may suggest, under number 10, District Local Technical Assistance, I know the town manager is here to listen to the board's discussion on that and perhaps have some input. So to help her maybe get on her way on a night that, if she would normally be home, I would ask that the board might move that up.
Certainly. Now, is that on our agenda because of this recent request from us?
Well, the board had talked about taking advantage of District Local Technical Assistance. We ran through the potential projects the last time, and the question came up about the EDSAT, or the Economic Development Self-Assessment Tool, and what that was, and if it was something the town wanted to, or the Planning Board particularly wanted to make an application for. I spoke with MRPC, and I spoke with a colleague who also took advantage of that District Local Technical Assistance grant from MRPC for the EDSAT. And really, what the DLTA does is it gives you access to the self-assessment tool, which is, you know, like a 500-question tool that you go through and you answer questions, and they tell you what you're doing well and what you're doing not well on economic development. And they help you develop and direct your economic development. But there's a cost of about $5,000 to the community to do all of the work after they've given you access to the test. And where the town, the selectmen, the planning board, hasn't particularly landed on a direction for economic development, whether they want it, how they want it, I don't know that that's a, an ex, you know, expense that I would recommend that we undertake at this time, especially with the master plan potentially upcoming. And the Economic Development Chapter being in that, I think perhaps a recommendation in that final chapter might be to, once the town has made some sort of decision on how they want to do economic development, use the EDSAT to help guide them into making policies or adjustments that would benefit them. I think the rest of, from my reading of it, the board has not expressed support for the Housing Choice Initiative. The town is in the process of wrapping up their first community compact, so getting help doing that isn't something that would really fit. And so that essentially leaves us with challenges and solutions to infrastructure requirements. And again, we haven't identified economic development activities. I'm on page two of the, or I guess it's page five of the DLTA. I'm missing a couple of pages. But, so not having identified economic development, I don't know how we could target infrastructure to benefit it.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Are we missing the same pages?
It appears that way.
All the even pages? And one?
It just looks like, no, it is all the even pages. Looks like something wonky happened in the copying, in the printing. We did have the full document at the last meeting because I read from it. But it seems the majority of the options are for housing and economic development. And I think housing isn't something that we're looking to expand on. And economic development, the town hasn't made a firm direction. So I don't know if, if there's a project that the board wishes to pursue, or if they want to defer to the project the town manager is looking to put forward, which is an ADA self-assessment plan.
Self-evaluation.
Self-evaluation and transition plan to get us into compliance.
Would you like to come up here and tell us what you'd like?
There you go.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So at the last Board of Selectmen's meeting, like the Land Use Director said, I asked them for a little support for a DLTA application to update the town's self-evaluation and transition plan, which was last done in 2009. So this is something I had also applied for a grant through Mass. Office on Disability, but we were not awarded the amount. So this would be another avenue to try to start that work and get that underway. But I wanted to work with the Planning Board and the Land Use Director on prioritizing. So if there was projects, I would defer, you know, if you had some higher priority project, and MRPC could only award one project to a community, then we would have a list to go from.
Okay. Super. I know that we have had, we'd had the Housing Production Plan Assistance, and I think the other thing, wasn't that the economic development?
It was.
That they prepared for, and that we never took any action on?
Correct.
And I believe Paula had requested that we bring that back?
Correct.
To look at. I guess we'd need to weigh whatever it is that you're looking for versus whatever it is that we're looking for. And is that something that is typically only asked for by Planning Board?
No, it's something that's open to all. I think what the town manager was referring to is this year, MRPC has indicated they have received a number of communities that have submitted multiple applications. So they would be looking for rank choice on the applications that are submitted to avoid multiple grants to individual communities at the detriment of another community who only submitted one and perhaps they weren't able to fund. So as I said, you know, unfortunately, the copy is missing some of the pages, but eligible projects are planning ahead for housing. Again,
HCP, yeah.
You know, that, that covers a variety of different things, but the majority of it is housing production plans, priority development areas, HUD housing, those kind of stuff. And we have a lot of that covered. And planning ahead for growth, which again is all the economic development-y sort of stuff, and we have an element that we can review that could be updated, but I don't think it's necessary to take advantage of this. And then community compact, which the town is currently in the process of wrapping up. So I, again, I don't want to speak for the board, and this is a follow-up. We had talked at the last meeting about the potential for the EDSAT, and I went and got the additional information. And I wouldn't recommend that the board find that that's an expense that we should undertake at this time.
So have we, have we put together any requests for the DLTA?
For this year?
Yeah.
Just the one that the town manager has mentioned. She's?
This year is from, to, what?
It would end on December 31st.
So we're just coming into it?
Correct.
Last year, we had two applications that MRPC did, the Permanent Guidebook.
Yep.
This one, and the Business Brochure. We worked with the business community.
The Business brochure that has been published?
Correct.
Yes.
And the Permitting Guidebook, which has been published. You voted to approve it, and it's on the website.
Okay, perfect.
So this transition plan, does it identify, like, buildings or projects?
Facilities, town properties, yes. And goes through, there's a detailed checklist for every facility to make sure we're compliant.
And does that, I guess what I'm getting at is, does that lead us on a specific path? In other words, we update the plan, are we now limited to doing only this project or that project? Like, how does, what I'm digging at is, how does this fit into the master plan and, you know, the decades-old conversation of five buildings?
I think it codifies what, what we need to be working on. That's what the transition plan would do, too. It's a plan on how you're going to address making those accessibility improvements, as well as it makes us eligible for grant, project grants through Mass. Office on Disability.
For completing the identified transitions that need to happen.
Okay. Well, if we haven't had any requests, and we're a quarter of the way into the period, and is this request fairly well-developed?
The 80, yes. Yep.
Well, we know how long it takes us to develop. If that one's fairly well-developed, I don't see any reason why we couldn't prioritize it.
Is there any cost to the town, or are we?
No.
Okay.
So I'm not sure how much of the whole entire cost they'll be able to do. It's a really large project, and typically they're limited to around $10,000 worth of technical assistance. So when we applied for this through Mass. Office on Disability, MRPC was the one who developed the scope, and it was a $50,000 project cost. So this might just get us underway, and then we can apply again for Mass. Office on Disability grant. Hopefully, that will show, you know, we're making efforts on the town part to get it updated.
Okay. Paula was on top of that stuff, and she did have a couple of things specific to DLTA's.
And I think most of her discussion was not spending it on the economic development, going back and looking at what we have.
Right.
And her other comment was, was getting into walkability, which is something that, I got an email from the town manager today scheduling the first discussion on the walkability study that was, I believe, awarded a year ago and is now starting in this project year under the Unified Planning Work Program.
Okay. All right. Well, is that something that you can forward to us to review, so that we can get an understanding of what it is, so we could prioritize it with our stuff?
We would just need to know the deadline's next Tuesday.
Oh.
I think we're good with allowing that to go through.
Yeah.
I don't think we're gonna come up with anything, an alternative by next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Forward this a copy, so we know what we voted to approve.
Pretty much, yeah. Yes. That sounds good. Do we need to take a vote on that?
If you're gonna send a letter of support, I would.
Okay. Can I take a motion?
Okay, I'll move that we approve the request for the DTL, DLTA spending. And send a letter of support for it.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Good night.
Thanks for staying.
Now, the next item will be?
Seven.
Board appointment to land acquisition committee.
So at the last Board of Selectmen's meeting, they formed a land acquisition committee. The town has been offered a very large parcel of land by the current owner. Essentially, the owner is looking to, my understanding is divest of the property. And instead of putting it on the market, they've come to the town and said, we would like to offer you, the town, the opportunity to purchase this. So the Board of Selectmen has created a land acquisition committee to work with the owners to see what they can do in acquiring this piece of property.
Can we talk about where this piece of property is, or what this piece of property is, or is that top secret?
I don't know. It's never been mentioned publicly.
Not until you're?
I guess it was mentioned publicly at a, at a Conservation Commission meeting. It's on Northfield Road.
Okay.
It's the area to the east and north of the golf course.
So east and north, that's north of the solar field, though?
It, well, it wraps around the solar field. It touches Howard Street, Northfield.
Has the frontage on Howard Street, so it's that large parcel?
Yes. Touches Northfield, Howard, and New West Townsend.
Interesting.
Okay.
And so, I mean, the Open Space Subcommittee created the checklist, right?
Correct. Well, that's for chapter lands. I believe that?
That property is not in chapter?
No.
Okay. That was quick, so I'm assuming it's already been asked.
And so this is a committee of, I believe it's one member of the Planning Board, two members of Open Space, a selectman, and a Conservation Commission member? Is that the fourth, or the fifth?
I think it's in the letter.
It is. Oh, and the letter's right in front of me. I'm sorry, a finance committee member, Planning Board member, Open Space Committee member, Conservation Member, and Selectman.
I'd be happy to fill the role.
Yeah?
I know that area of town pretty well.
I would nominate Tanner for the, for the role.
Is this something they're looking to form right away?
Well, I got the memo. It says, "Please advise this office who would be your representative as soon as possible, because this is a time-sensitive manner."
Okay. I was just thinking...
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent.
Let's get it for a good price, okay?
Excuse me. All right. Now, on to a bunch of administrative via minutes approval.
Minutes, minutes, or more minutes?
Two eleven.
Lots of minutes.
Two eleven.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have the, the dates, oh, the minutes were previously distributed, correct?
Correct.
For these other meetings? You, so we don't have them in our package?
Are they not in your package?
Nope, because they were previously distributed, but they were pulled out. Maybe Marjorie didn't know that we didn't vote on them.
Oh, she knew, because she did the agenda that includes all the things that you need to vote on.
There you go, but...
Minutes from Feb. 25.
If they were all attached, I read everything that was attached.
Oh, maybe I haven't, because they need to be initial?
Nope, that's these.
Oh, well, I've got them in my package.
Cool.
Maybe she's just out to get them.
I think so, because I didn't have the, the LTA thing either. My, my thing was, did you dump it on the way over here?
Yep. She brings it all over, so I don't, I don't touch anything until I get here.
That's all right.
Well, I've only got six, and it looks like a lot more than six.
She says I chat too much, so, anyway, well, let's go through them. Start at the beginning, right? Do you have the 211 one?
Right here. 211, 190 Electric.
I don't have it.
Can I see it? Was I at that meeting?
No.
No. So, I can't vote on that, so we can't vote on that.
So, nothing on 211?
Nothing on 211 can be done.
I think this is what happened last time.
Yep, it is. All right, so now we start with 225 and all these.
We had to skip the rest of the agenda.
Well, no, we had this, oh, we're right. You're right.
Oh, and Matt wasn't here on the 25th.
Which is the same one, no.
Correct.
So, no 25th can go through. What about 34? Were we all here on 34?
We need you to sign that, though.
Yes, we were all here on 34. I left early, but can I still vote on the minutes?
Yes.
Oh, I signed it for the other hearing.
All right, so, I'd make a motion that we appro, oh, do we have to vote, motion?
Yep.
Yeah, all right. So, I would make a motion that we approve the 34, 2019, I'm, uh, 400 Electric Avenue minutes.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then, I would move that we approve the 34, 2019, I'm, uh, 400 Electric Avenue minutes.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then, I would move that we approve the 34, 19 warrant articles.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then, I would move that we approve the general meeting minutes from 34, 19.
Second. Any discussion?
There's just that caveat that I missed the last 30 minutes of that meeting.
You approved up to 10:30.
I don't know if that matters, but I did review the minutes, but everything up to the last 30 minutes, I can approve.
And it's not time, we're not going to get any pushback from that, are we? No? All right, so, no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 So, that was it, right? All the ones we could? Okay, on to committee reports. Capital planning has not resumed yet until next budget season, probably what's, October, November, maybe?
Yeah.
Anyway.
Maybe late September.
No meeting, no report? Stormwater Task Force, we are meeting on...
Monday.
Monday. Oh, that's right, the weird one. No report.
Glad I said something, so you'll show up?
No, no, it's on, it's on here, don't... The Agricultural Commission, we met on the 21st. Our Lunenburg Community Farmers Market Manager has resigned, so we will be seeking a new market manager. We still have a vacancy as a full member. We have two vacancies as alternate members. We had plenty of discussion about farmers' markets and different towns and how they're handled. The major things, we had reports, we assign homework to individuals and say we follow up. One of the members followed up on banners across Mass Ave and various other towns. They had discussion with the DPW Director and with the Mass DOT. They actually got a person when they called, Mass DOT. And so, we're a go-ahead from both of those agencies. My understanding is that we need to petition the Board of Selectmen to approve location and erection, basically by bringing it up here, looking for input from any individuals, groups, as to nay, yea or nay on a banner, a banner across the roadway, to advertise various things such as town meetings, special events, farmer's market, you know, on and on, whatever, whatever other towns, and there's, there's many other towns that have them. The other thing was, oh, just signage at our existing right-to-farm sign. We got the go-ahead to advertise for the market there, which is kind of moot. But that's my report for that.
Are they bringing that sign to, or are you bringing that sign to us?
Um, no, there's no, there's no specific sign in mind. We just like the idea of having a banner over the main throughway in town. We've got probably close to 10,000 vehicle trips per day going through Mass Ave, going through the center of town on 2A. We needed the, we needed the approval from DOT for the 2A, because it is a state road. We needed the approval from DPW for any of the roads to put the poles up. We got specifics on what they require for poles, for minimum heights, for minimum visual effects.
Mm-hmm.
And basically, it has been a discussion item for about two years at AgCon meetings, and we finally gotten the go-ahead, so before seeking approval, it would be nice to get some input from other people or groups as to what they might like to see, if they wouldn't like to see them, if they would like to see them.
I think it makes sense in terms of getting people's attention. I guess my only concern in the center of town is where would you put them, so that they don't interfere with the view of the traffic lights?
They need to be 50 feet setback a minimum from the intersection. They need to be 18 feet minimum height clearance. They need to be either a telephone pole, or I believe it was a six-inch diameter steel post of 20 feet tall.
Okay.
So, flagpole, basically.
So, are we thinking putting it down the road towards where the school is, on that straightaway down there? Is that...
The original thought was, was one side or another, or both, along Mass Ave, one side or another of the intersection, and then...
So, like around School Street and around the library?
Yeah. And then, and then discussion at the, at our last meeting was that, well, what about Lancaster and Leominster? And they fork apart more than 50 feet from the intersection, so we could have one across both of them after they come together, or on Main Street, or, you know, wherever else we think, you know, maybe Route 13 coming into Lunenburg. That's the highest volume that I can think of. 225 would be, and 70 would be negligible, but, um...
So, I don't have a problem with banner signs. How do we, how do they get, how are they maintained? Because usually, banner signs are changed all the time.
Right. I think that would be DPW.
DPW would be changing them?
I believe so. But I wasn't necessarily looking for input right now.
Yeah, okay.
Just wanted to put it out there that we were looking for input. And so, now we're on to MJTC.
MJTC meeting was 313, but I was traveling, so I missed it. I don't know if Paula was able to attend or not.
Yeah, I don't know.
So, find out next time we see Paula, whether she was able to make it. Next meeting is 410. Not sure if I'll be traveling or not, but hopefully not.
All right, so...
MRPC?
Their next meeting is this Thursday, which is technically their April meeting. They moved it up a week.
To avoid the April snowstorm of next week?
Yes.
And I think I already reported this before, but the MJTC meeting prior to the last one was canceled. That's why there was never any minutes for that one.
Super. Charter review?
The final draft was approved at our last meeting. It's getting formatted. Couple of significant changes. The town clerk position will remain elected, so it won't be part of the scope at town meeting. So, we maintain the status quo there. And then, in terms of the title of the Board of Selectmen versus Select Board, that was integrated with the grammatical minor language changes. So, essentially, when we go to town meeting, we will have substantial changes and then grammatical changes to vote on, which should hopefully streamline the process.
All right.
The last two are Paula.
That's the way I was thinking. Okay. So, then we're on to Director's items.
Okay, so we've done two of my four things. One of them is signing plans. I don't know if you guys want to sign plans on camera, or if you want to wait until we're done and sign them as you're preparing to leave. But it would be the 380, 400 Electric, the Procter landscaping and car wash property. The 400 Electric is the new gas station, and the 190 Electric would be the solar facility. And then, in your packet, there's a single sheet of paper that shows the update proposed by Town Council per the Board's request to Section 5.6 of Chapter 250 of the Code of Lunenburg. Essentially, what it is is an anti-segmentation clause, so it's similar to something that the EPA does that says common ownership of parcels links them together for the purposes of this. It doesn't allow proposals to be separated just because, in order to avoid the 25-acre clause of 5.6. So, this would prohibit one subdivision being divided into six on, you know, 100 acres to avoid having to abide by the requirements of the earlier section. This was submitted and is on, will be on the warrant. It went to the town manager on Friday, and there will be a public hearing, the second meeting in April, to cover this. And my understanding is that in addition to what Mr. Massey mentioned tonight, I believe one of the articles he submitted is a zoning article. There is at least one, if not two, other citizen petitions for zoning, so we'll have another zoning article public meeting, or public hearing.
Okay.
Be here or be square.
Awesome. Just for information?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to comment, you can, but you can't really change the warrant at this point, and if, if at the public hearing you find that you want to change something, or something is altered, you can submit an amended motion and read that at town meeting, and it's functionally a floor amendment, but if you have it amended in the motion ahead of time, it makes it a little bit easier.
I guess my only question is, I've done a little bit of research on this part of the bylaw, because it's a more, if someone has a parcel of 100 acres and they file an A&R, break off a 25-acre parcel and sell it, then that parcel is still allowed to be a cluster.
Mm-hmm.
And then, they could conceivably go through the A&R process four times, file an A&R, and sell each piece off.
Correct, and each would be subject, and I'm, I'm trying to just get back to the beginning of the bylaw. That is the wrong one.
So, one of the clauses that I read, and this was, the city of Framingham has a clause in their bylaws that says they have a list of stipulations in order to qualify for a cluster development. You have to meet all of these, and one of them is, "The parcel may not have been subdivided into smaller parcels, including approval not required within a five-year period prior to submission of an application for this section." And in my mind, that's really what we're after here, because this, as it's been drawn by Town Council, in my mind, doesn't reflect the intent of the bylaw. I mean, our whole intent was to avoid the situation of a large parcel of land being subdivided into, I mean, whether you do it through A&R...
Still wouldn't that qualify as segmented or phased, whether it's an A&R?
Well, I, my, my understanding of the issue was that one subdivision was parceled out into 10 that relied on each other and didn't take advantage of the cluster. The situation you're describing would create four independent cluster subdivisions, which I don't believe would be in, at least, maybe, maybe you don't, you don't find that to be what you'd like, because you'd like the 100 acres to be taken as one, so that it's a more thoughtful design that incorporates all of it. But I don't, I feel like what you're describing still requires them to file under cluster.
Right.
And wouldn't create the situation that we were in in the, the case that we've talked about. And I agree that we could do a lot more with this bylaw. I think the intent of this was to avoid that existing loophole continuing to be driven through, and this would do that. The Board, I mean, you, I guess you could, you could certainly look to add some language like what Framingham has, if that's what the Board wants to do. I'm sure there's a way to include it in here. Or you could rely on this for now and take up a rewrite of 5.6 that would be more holistic and would perhaps lead towards some of the things that you're talking about. I think both are entirely possible.
So, I guess what I, I almost feel like we need both approaches in that...
Okay.
This prevents half of it, but it doesn't, under this clause, the way I interpret it, somebody could conceivably go through the A&R process and shuffle the land around in such a way that they can do the cluster development and limit how much open space and, I don't know. I, I'm looking for the unintended consequences of leaving the door open to allow people to go through the A&R process and then cluster things up.
I think really what you would do is, is you'd be looking at people dividing into parcels less than 25 acres, and thus, wouldn't be subject to. Because it sounds like Framingham is looking to limit who can apply for that, and maybe I misheard what you said. And maybe I misheard what you said, but the, the way it wrung in my head was in order to qualify for this, as opposed to what ours says is essentially, if you have this, you're subject to this. So that 100 acre could be divided five times and create five standard subdivisions of, you know, 12 or 15 lots, depending on, on the size.
Yeah. Which I guess, I mean, that's another discussion to have, whether our preference is to, would we prefer to have 24-acre standard subdivisions, or would we prefer to have larger subdivisions and open space? But I guess this is a step in the right direction, but I just...
It just closes a loophole.
Mm-hmm.
It is. And I, and I think our cluster bylaw says 50% open space?
Uh, yeah, I believe that's what it is.
So all four of them would have to each have 50% open space?
So the open space would remain the same in the case of 100 acres being into four? The only difference would be, it would be one large cluster versus four smaller clusters with the same amount of open space. So I guess the question would be, is there a preference to one large versus four smaller? And then also, I don't...
It's actually probably less preferential, because the more, the more land you include, the more undesirable land ends up getting included as the open space land.
Right, yes, right. So the smaller...
So it's actually, the smaller parcels tend to be more restrictive, because you don't have all of that.
And you tend to get less houses, because the infrastructure takes up so much land, and then you have to give 50% back to the other.
Right.
So you, you actually can create a, a reduction based on that, because when you have more land, you can sort of shuffle things around to...
Yeah, because we've seen that before. Shuffle everything around, get as many houses as they can, and then you have garbage land left over, and they say, oh, that's all our open space.
Yes.
You know, it's like, that's not really what the intent was.
I have a little bit of an issue with...
Exactly.
Have a little bit of an issue with...
You're welcome.
With the way that it's very, well, in general. I mean, if someone has, let's say that someone lives in the resby or outlying, whether it's a two-acre minimum, and they've got 26 acres, and they want to build, they want to build one minimum-sized lot and then sell the rest off. That would be against this, as long as it was subsequent to the date of adoption here of, then that would not allow them, that would, that would put them in violation of this if they tried to do...
No, no, because they wouldn't have control anymore.
And it says, otherwise transferred, so as to avoid compliance with this, defer or curtail the applicability of the requirements of this bylaw. So if they were, let's say they got 26 acres at a steel. They're like, I want to build a house, and I'm going to build it on four acres, because why not? I have the land. They're not doing that as a way to curtail or defer. They're doing their due diligence.
So how is intent any different than ownership insofar as zoning for it?
I guess I, I, I don't understand. Maybe I misheard what you said.
Well, you're talking about intent, and this actually says intent, right?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
How can we determine someone's intent?
If, if by doing so, it would avoid compliance.
Which I guess I'm not quite sure. We require...
No, I mean, you can't, I don't know that you can identify someone's intent, but if someone carves off four acres and comes to the board and says, look, I'm going to build a house, I don't need the rest of this land, I'm going to put it up for sale, and then they're in front of you, six or eight months later, with a subdivision plan for 22 acres, then I think the intent right there has been identified. But if they're building their house and selling land to someone else who then applies, I don't, I, and I guess it's a question we can, we can pose to town council.
Well, again, I haven't put this into context. I haven't, I haven't, this is the first time I'm actually putting my eyes on this, so I can come back.
Again, I just sent it out today, so it, and you're going to have a few weeks to, to read into it.
Yep. Excellent.
Would you like me to try and incorporate some of the language from, similar to Framingham, or, I mean, what's the board's preference on that?
Is it too late? No?
Well, you can, through the public hearing process, amend what's proposed, and then you would just present an amended motion to town meeting. It's just going to be tight timewise. I mean, not to say that it can't be done, it just...
I do like the avoidance of the other loophole that you presented from Framingham. I think that's good. I don't know if it's, how easy it would be to incorporate that. But then the amendment would close two loopholes instead of just one.
I guess we can wait for the public, public hearing process at this point, right? And then...
Well, this will probably...
Well, but if you would like it incorporated, I'd like to have some time to sort of wiggle the language and, and see how it, it fits together.
Still would have to be presented at the public hearing.
Yes, it would, but it, it would, you know, rather than trying to shoehorn it while we're live at the public hearing, I'd like to try and craft it in there if that's something that, that the board wants.
I mean, I think it would be good.
Well, I honestly, again, I don't have a frame to put, make my decision on. Like you said, we just got this today, and you'd like to have time to shoehorn it in?
Well, maybe...
We're the ones going to present this and, and present this to town meeting, right?
Well, usually I've done the presentations. If you'd like to, you're welcome to.
Well, this is coming from the planning board.
Correct.
And we just got this today, so I don't think it's fair to ask us to...
So why don't we do this?
Give you time to shoehorn it.
Well, I'm responding to something that was brought up by a member of the board.
Right. We did this, and this is the legal, legal language of what we discussed.
I don't disagree with that.
So why don't we talk about it on the 8th, as whether or not it's something that the board would like to see in there?
Yep.
Yeah, you're right. It doesn't need to be decided tonight, but I also don't want to be sitting here on, whatever it is, the 22nd, going, uh, could say this, or this, or this, and, and have the board vote on something that...
Yeah, I think these situations, you really have to think it through and, you know, think of all the what-ifs, because that's what got us into a difficult situation in the first place, was not thinking through all the what-if scenarios.
On the one occasion.
And I don't know if, I like the language that Framingham, Framingham has, but I also don't want to create a situation where it's contradictory in any way to what this language is, so. And I can forward that language to you, Adam.
Okay.
I'll email it.
Thank you.
All right. So is that the, that's it?
Mm-hmm.
So notices and communications?
They've been scanned and emailed.
Meeting schedule?
8th and 22nd.
And we don't have anything major on either one yet?
Nope.
Hmm. Okay.
Time to jump into the solar rewrite.
Which is on the ongoing items.
Thought we would start with off-street parking. Neither's going to be fun or easy. I, I think that depending how things go, we might have some sort of workshop-y discussion on the 8th. Off-street parking, I'm, I mean, I'll take whatever the board wants to provide for direction, but I think that's really more just contemporizing and, and using the use table to put reasonable parking calculations. The solar, I, I'm going to want some discussion on what the board is, is looking for, because there's as many opinions on solar as there, there's that many directions on how the rewrite could happen. You know, can it be a primary use? Should it be a primary use? Is it going to be a primary use in some zones and not in others?
I know I'm not going to...
Do a KW or a footprint?
Yeah, I know I'm not going to be here, but my input would be it should be footprint-based, not KW-based, and we should address multiple sizes, not just small and large, so that we can get more detail around the handling of each of the conditions and the types. And then maybe provide a little bit more restrictions around where different types could be, based upon their size, so that it's not just small or everything else. And then I think that would open it up for people to have non-intrusive deployments, but not have quite as much restriction as they have today.
My...
We should also, oh, I'm sorry.
My understanding is that there's a citizen petition for something on solar.
Yeah, I haven't gotten the citizen petitions yet. I did hear there was something about that, but I, I can't speak to what it is yet.
The other thing I was going to say is, I'd also like to see, again, I'm not going to be here, but I'd also like to see the firming up the language around what exactly is meant by buffering, such that it's not quite as subjective and a topic of conversation in the meetings.
Yeah, and I, you know, I've done landscaping bylaws before where you're, you know, assigning plant material by length, you know, so for every X number of feet, you have X number of this manner of plant, X number of this manner of plant, and not necessarily defining how they're laid out, but requiring them to be placed. And usually it's for like commercial applications, and it gives the, the owner of the property the ability to cluster them as they see appropriate for sightlines and that kind of stuff. And I think the same thing in theory could work for solar.
Right. I think it should, it should detail sightlines, it should detail elevations, it should detail visibility at distances. All of that stuff should go into the bylaw, so it's crystal clear, if I stand here and I look in that direction, am I going to see it or not? You know, because that's where all the subjectivity seems to come from in the meetings.
And I think, you know, in, you're not going to ever design something that you're not going to see it, in, in my opinion. And so I think it's a matter of minimizing and shielding as much as possible.
Mm-hmm.
So we were still on meeting schedule?
Uh, no.
No, we were going through the ongoing items.
Okay. Cluster development, come out of there. Oh, and on the subject of master plan, we can talk about this more at a future meeting, there is a grant from the economic, or the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs that potentially master planning could qualify for. So we can, if the board wishes, apply for that grant. It's due at the end of May, and that would be something that we could match with the capital funds that we perhaps will get at town meeting. So it would more or less be a one-to-one match and use that to fund a portion of the, the master plan. It is a competitive grant. Planning is an eligible activity. A lot of what they talk about is not necessarily planning, but...
Well, we could put that towards research or...
Yeah, and it, well, and what it could do is it could fund half of the, the writing of the master plan, and the capital funds could fund the other half, and it, it just would help to offset it if, if it were granted. It's at least, in my opinion, worth exploring.
So why would we ever, why would we not apply for a grant that gives us money?
Don't know.
Okay. Who does that application? You? Okay.
Unless you'd like to take a crack at it.
No, I'm not very good at that.
All right. Does that wrap that one up?
It does.
Excellent. So now we're on to public comment. Is there any public comment with public that we have left? All right. Board's comments or concerns? I'm good. Okay.
Move that we adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yo, don't get to leave.